Call the city council work session, me need to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Susan Germany. Hayder. Stillgrave. Vining. Mayor Clark.
A work session before we get to the agenda, the first item on the agenda is public comment. The work session this evening is about our recreation program and it's a recap of that. But if there's anybody that's here which should make public comment at this time, now would be the opportunity, any public comments for the work session. See you none. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under the work session agenda, it's item fifty-five forty-two, twenty-two five summer season recreation programming recap.
You, Manager Robinson, review here.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to ask Director Cochran to come up to make an introduction because we're going to hear about the progress and the wonderful things that have been done, both at the YMCA and MCOP with our sports as well as the ones, the information from our own city programs as well.
Thank you. Mr. Cochran.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Clerk Treasurer LaVoy. So annually, since we've established partnerships with both the YMCA and MCOP, we've come to present to the city council about what are the outcomes of that partnership? And just as a reminder, this is in line with one of your goals and objectives for this term, which is to grow and sustain a thriving community and facilitating partnerships to create and enhance vibrant social and recreational activities. So one of your focus areas has been with directives toward us is making sure that these events are spread all throughout the city and not just focused in one location. So first, Stephanie Casperzak with MCOP and the Opportunity Center at ALCC. We've partnered with them now for several years on the tot lot program as well as programming at the Opportunity Center and also Labor Park throughout the city. And so Stephanie is going to present on outcomes from their agency from this summer. So Stephanie.
Excellent. Good evening. Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Stephanie Casperzak, Executive Director, MCOP and the Opportunity Center. As always, we have a ton of fun in the summer at the Opportunity Center. And I'm going to talk a little bit about all the different things that we did from June through August. But I just wanted to start out with, as you guys know, we have the grant through the city through, for the National Recreation and Park Association to do mentoring. And today, we just received this really cool dashboard that I'll send out to everybody. But I just wanted to share, that was a two-year grant. We received additional funds on several occasions because we were doing a wonderful job. They came for a site visit last summer. And through the two years, we had forty-seven mentors and seven-hundred-and-nine mentees at the Opportunity Center throughout that two-year period. Reminder, we were only supposed to meet three-fifty and we were a little nervous that we'd get to three-fifty, but we got to seven-hundred-and-nine. So I just wanted to share that as a little piece of good news as I get started about our summer programs at the Opportunity Center. First and foremost, our summer youth, our summer youth employee program has been here since, well, six years ago when we started at the Opportunity Center. I can't believe it's been six years, but this program has been a wonderful addition and has grown over the years. This past year, we had twenty-two youth. Their ages fourteen to twenty-one, and they come to help with summer tot lot. We have two youth at each tot lot location. We have youth who help out with summer camp. They help our SEDEXO, our partnership with SEDEXO, to serve food to the kids. And they also assist with cleanup and the community garden to make sure that that all stays clean and maintained throughout the summer. As part of the program, we also expose our youth to financial literacy programs, substance abuse prevention, and they even helped to build a United Way ramp this year. So we have community engagement and community service as part of our summer youth employee program, too. So those were new adds this year, but really important for our youth as they grow into young adults. We added two more, so we had a total of twenty-four. We added two more summer youth employees. They were hired as a result of our new collaboration for the Momentum Program with Monroe County Community College. And those two summer youth helped to recruit young adults into college. But they also participated in events, talked about the Monroe County Community College and how wonderful it was, and just really spent the summer talking up this program, so much so that enrollment was full for this program once we hit the fall. So that worked out really well. Next year, we're going to be adding an entrepreneur focus to our summer youth employee program. And there will be more coming soon on that one after your meeting later tonight. Then we have summer camp, obviously. These, a lot of these might seem familiar to you. We always start out our summer camp with kidpreneur. This is where we have kid entrepreneurs come in and talk about how they started their small business to plant a seed for, for our youth in hopes that one day they might start their own small business as well. We have Discover Monroe Week, so we love to just, you know, explore different parts of Monroe and see the different sights. So we take kids all across Monroe, including to Chambers here, just to introduce kids to different opportunities that are available for them right here in our wonderful town. We have Health and Fitness Week and Boxing Camp. So those are two separate. So during the day, we have Health and Fitness Camp. Then we have Boxing with Todd Riggs and Dee Mills. We have digital literacy programs, so for kids who like to work on the computer, learn things like coding and how to develop logos, that's a wonderful summer camp week that we have. Are always popular, are with Amy. So you see, this is Camilla here. Amy has the Port of Monroe, have a field trip every year. And they go out to the port and they actually paint the little tugboat that's in the port there. So they have a lot of great fun doing it, and Amy does, too, as well as the folks at the, at the port. So that's been a wonderful partnership. We have life skills, young authors. Hopefully, you all saw in my quarterly report, on the advisory council, we picked our young author, Ava Johnson. She just had her book published at the end of the summer, so it's out on Amazon. We're going to be having Ava come to the Center for Kids Club and read her book, but also purchase some copies for the kids at the center. So we're really super excited about that. And then we added skilled trades camp. So Colin Keane from United Way, as I mentioned, had kids come out and build a ramp, but they also learned about some of the other skilled trades as well. So overall, this summer, we had forty-three unduplicated campers totaling one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-two visits. So typically, we had between thirty-five and forty campers each week. Next, we have our summer tot lot. This is the new space at Greenwood. So they opened a community center last year. And so the kids, on rainy days or very hot days, were able to go inside to the community center. Tot lot was offered at Munson, St. Mary's, Father Carnes, Labor Park and Greenwood. SEDEXO was our partner to provide meals, so they provided breakfast and lunch for the students. They provided four-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-one meals at these sites and for summer camp at the center. So those are tot lot numbers as well as our summer camp numbers. For tot lot, we had a total of one-hundred-and-forty-nine unduplicated kids who participated and two-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-four visits in total. And again, we have two summer youth employees at each site. And then we have one of our supervisors going around to make sure everything's going okay. This summer, we also had our Center Youth League. We had basketball and boxing camp, so we had one-hundred-and-thirty-five youth participate in our summer basketball league. And then we had twenty-two kids. Look at all the girls in that picture. We have about ten girls who are boxing right now with Todd. And that's really cool. But summer boxing camp has come, become really popular as well. And then we have our special events. So our special events in Labor Park throughout the summer included, Rotary has been our partner now for two years in the sharing garden, so they help us to plant and clean up the garden at the beginning of the season. We had our Juneteenth Celebration, and you have all of our Center Impact Awardees in this picture here. Really wonderful event to celebrate Juneteenth and wonderful people who are doing great work at the center. We had our Momentum Block Party, which is our kickoff, which was the kickoff for the Community College and our new program. We had our first Citywide Health and Fitness Week, which was a result of a grant through the Michigan Fitness Foundation. And so I believe the number was three-thousand-and-fifty-five total participants in Health and Fitness Week in July seventh through the twelfth. And then we had our End of Summer Bash, which includes a Touch a Truck event in August before kids go to school. So lots of fun events as well. And these are all of our funding partners. We're so grateful for the city in particular for allowing us to do this great work. Again, it's been six years and we just keep kind of growing and expanding. We have a grant from the Michigan Fitness Foundation, our United Way, local United Way. It's campaign season. Please support if you can. The wonderful Lazy Boy Foundation. My leap, as you guys know, last year around this time, we were approved for a childcare license. So it is now a requirement in the state of Michigan. If you do after-school or summer camp care, that you have a license. And so we did go through that process and we're renewed in June. So we follow all those guidelines as well. The Port of Monroe helps with our Art Camp Week and the Monroe County Community College. So that's all I have. Do you all have any questions?
Any questions for Stephanie and some of the activities? Obviously, there's a lot going on. I always enjoy seeing photographs of the students and the numbers continue to grow as far as our engagement with youth, which is critically important where we're going to be in the future. So I wanted to say thank you for the efforts and our partnership here with the city.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Thanks, Stephanie. I wanted to highlight the Community Wide Health and Fitness Week that Stephanie talked about because that was, that was a remarkable event this year that included many partners with MCOP, taking the lead with the Michigan Fitness Foundation. But we were in our office one day and Sue Vanasacker called and said, hey, we got a grant and support through our relationship with the American Heart Association. Is there any way we can partner with the city? And Stephanie and I have been talking about the Community Wide Health and Fitness Week. And we said, well, why don't we pull in Lazy Boy and the Heart Association and the YMCA and thinking about doing this broadly across the entire city? And so I thank Stephanie for taking the lead and the YMCA for participating in that. And of course, our friends, Sue Vanasacker at Lazy Boy. But next is Kristin Irwin, the Executive Director with the YMCA. Since two thousand and twenty-two, we've partnered with them on our community recreation programming and sports leagues, but more so, they also offer other opportunities throughout the city in addition to the organized sports. And so I'd like to introduce Kristin, but also two gentlemen who are no stranger to any of us if you've ever been out to the ball fields during summer season. So Kristin.
Thanks for having me. Honorable Mayor, City Council, Clerk Treasurer LaVoy, City Manager David Robinson, thanks for having me. This is always exciting. I love talking about our programs. So it's always fun to come and talk every October. I always say first, thank you to the city employees for partnering with us. Your employees are the best. From Mark Cochran, who's always looking out for us. Amy Mason, Brad and the park crew, they're, they're second to none best park crew in the world. They always have the best interests of the community at heart. They really work hard for the kids. We partner really well together. Public safety, Department of Public Safety is awesome. Thank you for partnering with us. They were out at ball games, sponsored some, well, they didn't sponsor some teams, but gave some t-shirts to some, some kids. We appreciate you. Mark had already mentioned, the face of our league is, are these two back here? Hawk Milky is our Community Recreation Director and Jay Heiserling is our Wine the Fly Mobile Sports Director. They are at every practice, every games. They listen to all the complaints, all the fun things. I appreciate you guys. Thank you. We hired a new gentleman, Brian Stang. He is now a trio. He's out at the fields. We're finishing Fall T-Ball today, actually tomorrow, with makeup game, so he's out at the field covering. And I didn't want to, it would be remiss if I didn't recognize him. And also our volunteers this summer at Munson, we had over seventy, we hired over seventy-five youth ball volunteers, and they were all amazing. They did good, which, really, really good community. Whoops. Oh. Youth Ball, our youth, our youth program at Munson Park is our staple program. And I was looking at these numbers and I always just go from year to year. But if you look from two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-five, we've more than doubled our participants in these programs, which I, it blows my mind. We blew it out of the park, you guys. Get it? Yeah, we hit home run.
No pun intended.
Yeah. I, I just, I'm, we feel incredibly blessed. We're, we, I said last year, we don't have enough fields, especially for practice, but we're working on a partnership where maybe we will get some more teams in fields, ironing out the details, hopefully, hopefully something will work out. We, during the summer, we have, we run a county light, countywide recreation league where we play teams from Dundee, Summerfield, Ida, Custer, Frenchtown. Jay actually does all the scheduling for all of the teams, and he does it by hand. I don't know how he does it, but, so he's in charge of this, this league, which, thank you, Jay, for doing that. We had an end of the season All-Star night. Many of you guys were attended. Mayor Clark threw the first pitch. He told me he practiced, too, before. He had to practice a little bit. That was good. We had a hundred and twenty players, lots of spectators. The, it was a beautiful night. We liked that night because we can showcase Munson. And the kids play under the lights, and that's a really big deal for young kids to say they get to play under the lights at Munson Park. Anyway, I just said, we're finishing Fall T-Ball tomorrow. Our adult softball leagues, this is kind of, I was looking at these numbers, too. I'm like, holy cow. Donnie Jones is still the Director of the Adult Softball Leagues. He's been with the city for a long time. He's really good. And I asked, I called these two, I'm like, why do we have so many participants, especially in the summer? We went from six-forty last year to nine-twenty-five. And they said, one, we're, our co-ed numbers are up. So I think that's pretty awesome. We play under the lights and a lot of facilities don't have lights, and that's a draw here to Monroe, which I think is important because I think there's a lighting project coming up or, maybe? And we're running double headers, and so that's appealing. Is it, is it? Okay. Yeah, so I'm really happy with our adult softball. We also still run the concession standout at Munson. So we have a food license. We serve simple things, walking tacos and popcorn and hot dogs. So that's, that's been fun. Adult programs, the Summer Fitness Series at St. Mary's Park, that, this is where our, this relationship all started. I'm not really happy with the numbers here, but we had to cancel a couple of days due to weather this year. But we can, we like that. We like our instructors' light going out there. And then sand volleyball, we started that two years ago, and I'm quite happy with the numbers in sand volleyball, too, because we're able to run that program. And Brad and his crew do a really good job keeping up those courts. And finally, no, this is not finally. Our adaptive programs, I always try to plug our adaptive programs when we're here. We run adaptive T-ball and soccer at Munson. These are free programs to the community, so if you know of anybody or we want to get kids involved. We also run adaptive gymnastics, basketball, swimming and fitness at the Y. Kind of year-round, we go in sessions. So we'd love to have, we'd love to have kids. So if you know of anybody or if anybody's listening, get involved in our adaptive program. And we take volunteers for that, too. And finally, we've been, I've been excited to program a little bit at Carnes Park. We had a drop-in Wine the Fly on Monday and Wednesday mornings for kids ages five through twelve. It ran from June to August, and we had two-hundred-and-twenty-five participants in that. And that's Jay's crew who went out there. And we were pleasantly surprised at the amount of kids that we get out there. And then we ran a ladder league with adults, just got over. Oh, we have a self-proclaimed pickleball expert now. It's hot. He's a, so he's, he's doing a bunch of pickleball, or trying to. So we had fun with that, so we appreciate the use at Carnes Park. And then lastly, we were just running a preschool football at Munson Park right now. And Jay, Jay is in charge of that, and that's going well. And that's all I really got. Thank you, thank you for the recognition for our seventieth anniversary, too. We had a great seventieth week and it was really special. So hoping that the Y is in this community for seventy more years and beyond. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you, Kristin. I agree that all the activities are great to see out there and the increase, but also the, to be able to celebrate your seventieth anniversary was enjoyable. Anything, great to see the people there and, and opportunities to recognize not just what we're doing now, but the history that YMCA brings and the benefits to our community. So I'll say thank you again. Any questions from council members on the presentation? As we said, we're doing the recreation program recap for our, our partners that provide those leadership and guidance through, for our community and the communities surrounding, for youth, adults and, and everybody, as you said. So any questions? I don't see anything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Mark?
Thank you, and thank you, Kristin. She mentioned the, the lighting project at Munson. You'll recall, we've talked about this before during this presentation, but it wasn't shortly before the YMCA became a partner with us on recreation. We were going to take the lights out because they're, they need replaced. They're in a state of, condition that they need replaced right now. And it's about a half a million dollar project. And looking at whether we were going to make that investment and looking at the participation numbers with Little League and adult softball, we wondered if that was going to be the best use of resources. But then step in the Y and Hawk and Jay, and you see how the numbers have dramatically increased over the past several years. And if you haven't been to the, the All-Star Game, it's really special to see the kids playing under the lights and how they feel big time when they're playing under the lights and then the draw that that is for the other recreation opportunities. So as part of our capital improvements, we've been putting money away every year toward that project. So it is coming, although a couple more years off and we'll get them through. But, and then the adaptive program, it's been a priority for us in administration, but also council, that all of our parks are open and accessible to anybody of any ability. And making sure that we have playground equipment and facilities and sidewalks that make our parks safe and accessible for everybody. And the adaptive program is really my favorite that they've started because that's very complimentary to what you have prioritized in our recreation. And so thank you, Hawk and Jay. They're the unsung heroes who really give up so much of their own lives and their own time because their job is not nine-to-five. They're out there daytime, nighttime, weekends, all the time, making sure that these programs run like a well-oiled machine. And certainly Brad and Amy, our seasonal crew and our full-time parks crews, maintaining not only the ball fields for all of those thousands of participants, but also Labor Park and, and our other facilities, three, thirty-six parks across three-hundred acres, and they've got to maintain it all. So couldn't do it without them. But also our summer concert series. So the city's recreation programs, no doubt, you've seen Amy Mason at every single one of these events. Nice when fall comes around and the schedule slows down a little bit. But our two thousand and twenty-five concert series was still widely popular. We did have one less concert this year due to the, how the Fourth of July holiday landed and also the uncertainty with the park construction project. But still estimate about sixteen thousand attendees at all of our concert series throughout the park. These are just the ones in St. Mary's Park. But we couldn't do it without our sponsors. And Amy, as well as other city staff, do a great job of maintaining relationships out in the community for those who support. So the credit union was back as our presenting sponsor this year. But also all the other sponsors that are listed on the screen that we want to make sure that we give due recognition to for making these events possible, that people come and gather and enjoy our facilities and enjoy our city throughout the summertime. And so we couldn't, we couldn't do it without them either. Certainly, bands are not getting any cheaper these days and making sure that we, Amy does a great job of making sure that we get a good mix of artists and, and keep it relevant and different. So the other events that Amy and our staff do a great job at organizing that aren't necessarily attended by sixteen thousand people, but the summer dance party in St. Mary's Park on the tennis courts, over a hundred and fifty people in that. The daddy-daughter dance always sells out very quickly, just shy of four hundred this year. The line dancing nights that are similar to the court dances, mother-son bowling, Halloween bark in the park that just took place last weekend. And then in addition to organized events, Amy does a great job of also creating independent activities that people can use to independently go out in the parks. So if you haven't seen them, she's put together scavenger hunts that are meant to encourage people to go with their family and explore our parks and find different opportunities. And when they turn in their scavenger hunt sheet, they're entered in to win a prize. And so we've had families participate in that, but we always like to encourage more. The garden plot rentals at Munson Park, we had thirty of those rented this year. And then the movie night that we use, the River Rays and National Battlefield Park Education Center and the theater facility that was installed there. And then the Finally Fridays at Altrusa Park were back and even more popular this year. And is part of the reason we're making a significant investment in Altrusa Park in the coming years to make that more of a thriving gatherings place in the, in the downtown along the river. So Amy does a great job with these great events. We're already planning for next year, including the unknown with the construction of St. Mary's Park and how we'll navigate that. But we did a great job with it this year and we'll certainly do it again next year. So, you know, as I look at Stephanie's numbers and Kristin and Hawk and Jay's numbers and our numbers, it's remarkable to me, all the opportunities that we have in offer for people to enjoy our communities at many different level, levels. And they run it like a well-oiled machine. The parks go, the concerts go, the recreation. You guys make it look easy. I know it's not. And then certainly the hustle and bustle at the Opportunity Center and the Orchard East neighborhood. So thank you for your support in making these events happen and successful.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions or comments from council? Kathy?
I'll just add a comment that I really appreciate all the work. It does make it look easy. It's not, I know. It does make it look easy, it's not, I know, there's a lot of planning that goes into it. And all of these extra things just create better community, better enjoyment. And then I'll add just one little funny thing, I was at a concert recently. Obviously, our concerts in the park, the word has gotten out, because this band did a shameless plug, trying to find somebody that could get them into concerts at the park at St. Mary's next year.
Our phones were ringing today with people trying to connect us with them.
So it's, it's a good thing, like, we like the good things, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Kelly?
Forgive my tardiness, I was at work. Jay, we miss you guys over at Navarre Library. So, Mark, when we get ready to design this new, we gotta keep some grass. I'm always advocating for grass, because when Y on the Fly comes, you know, we do the outdoor sports and everything. So we gotta keep some grass over there, so we can welcome Y on the Fly back to Navarre. So we really missed you guys. We know you do so much work with the kids, and we appreciate you. And Stephanie, you guys at the Opportunity Center as well. So thank you, Mark. And Amy, of course, does a wonderful job.
Thanks, Kelly. Other comments from council? Seeing none. Mark, just want to say thank you again to everybody for being here, but also for the work over the past year, and look forward to the upcoming years.
Thank you.
Manager Robinson, any other items, or if you're looking for any questions from council? I know we have another special meeting after this.
There are no other items scheduled for the work session. And we're all set to be able to go to the third floor for the City Council Special Meeting in closed session.
Counsel for the administration on recreation programming, if there's something specific, or if you have thoughts, can always forward those along to the administration, make sure they get to, to Mark, Amy, and others, and then of course to our partners as well, if you have any. So with that, at this time, I'm going to adjourn the City Council Work Session. And I don't think we need to take a pause.
Okay, we're, we're back now and we'll make, we need, I need a motion to go back into open session for the.
I'll make a motion to go back into open session.
Motion by Council Fellers, board of eight, Councilman Germaine to go back in the session, clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we don't have anything further on the special meeting, so I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Council Fellers, board of eight, Councilman Hader to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Very good.
Call the city council meeting to order, clerk, please call the roll.
Germaine, Stringham, Herr, Felder.
Here.
Hader.
Here.
Stillgrave.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here, and as we all please rise to the indication, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Guide us in our deliberations and discussions, may our efforts promote the good of the residents of this city and all who visit.
The pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the approval of the regular agenda.
Comments from council on the regular agenda, I know manager will talk about something that the consent agenda later, but any items on the agenda.
Motion to approve the regular agenda, your honor.
Motion by Councilman Hader, supported by Councilwoman Stringham to approve the regular agenda, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Stringham.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Hader.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yeah.
Mayor Clark.
Yes, next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda and for item B, approval of payments, the amount should read two million four hundred twenty-three thousand seven hundred sixty dollars and sixty-one cents, two four two three seven six zero point six one.
Thank you, as we get started on the consent agenda, items to be pulled, I know that manager Robinson has a conversation, so I'm gonna ask that item fifty-five forty-six be pulled from the agenda inside them because there's additional information that impacts the decision that was before us, manager Robinson will provide that, I requested it be pulled and put at the conclusion of the council action, but I'll see if there's other items on the agenda, consent agenda, council wishes to have pulled for further discussion. Other items from the council. Any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion, items that remain on the consent agenda will be passed with a single vote for all items other than fifty-five forty-six, which is being recommended to be put on council action. Any council, any comments from those present here this evening, or I'm sorry, any items on the consent agenda. Seeing none. Motion for the consent agenda, Councilman Hader.
Your honor, I'd like to move to have item fifty-five forty-six move to county council action.
And you want to approve the items that are, what do you mean? Okay. There's a motion by Councilman Hader and supported by Councilwoman Germaine that all items on the consent agenda absent item fifty-five forty-six, which will be placed under council action, all remaining items will be accepted, placed in file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Stringham.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Hader.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is a presentation, item five five five-two, men on a mission.
Manager Robinson.
Your honor, council, I'd like to invite Director Tolstad from our public safety department to come up and present to council, the group of individuals who make up men on a mission, and kind of explain what their mission is and how they support the city and the residents of our city.
Director Tolstad.
Yes, sir, thank you city manager, Honorable Mayor, city council members, clerk Lavoy, thank you for having us here tonight, I am Chad Tolstad, your director of public safety. With me here, we have a group of men, part of the, what we call the core eleven, but before we introduce the group and what we're about, I want to just give you a little bit of background and how this, how we form, form this group here, is after the tragic death of one of our community members, in which both Aaron and I knew, Aaron reached out And out of that spawned some discussions between him and I of how we can better do, better connect with our community. And every chief of police wants this for their community. We would want to community support. I want the support of the members of the community, and we all want the same things. We want a safe community in which all of our citizens can live in, can thrive in, and be a part of, and we are much stronger together than we are apart. So we started meeting as a group. Me and Aaron kind of talked, and I'll let Aaron get up here and talk a little bit more, but we started meeting. And through these meetings, we started kind of honing in on what we wanted to do. We started very narrowly focused, and then we got real, real big on what we wanted to do, and then we were like, we're like, we need to hone back in again. And we came up with a mission, we have focus areas and what we want to do, and we have one of our first events coming up here, which I'll speak to. But right now, I'll have Aaron come up here and speak to you as well. Aaron?
Absolutely, absolutely. Aaron Lavender, 428 Elmira Avenue, honorable mayor, city council, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, and city council. You guys know me. I like to speak from the heart, but I did write a few things down because I think it's important to say. First, I just want to say, thank you to each and every one of you for your public service to our community. What you do is so important, is valuable, and it does not go unrecognized or undervalued. I know election season is coming up, and we can't say who we want to vote for, but I'm telling each and every one of you to use your voice to get out there and vote. Someone voted to put you guys in those seats, and you guys got to do a job to make sure that you do exactly what the community needs you to do. So I just want to say thank you for your service. And with that being said, I also want to say thank you to Chad Tolstad. He is a man that is humble. He is my brother. He is a man that has integrity. He is a man with class, and we would not be standing before you today without his leadership. And his leadership shows from the fire department to the police department. His leadership shows to his troops, to the firemen that I, that I just met during the firemen's family get together. And I love him like I love my brothers behind me, and that's the reason why he's part of this man on a mission, too. It's people like him that make this community better, and I'm so honored that he's here standing beside us, not in front of us or behind us, but beside us in this mission that we walk together. So I just want to personally thank you, brother, because a lot of times, people get their flowers when they're gone. And I'm the type of person like to give their flowers while they're here, and I want to be on record to say that you're a gem to this community. I love you and thank you for all the work you do. It means the world to me. With that being said, like I said, I wrote some things down because I know people want to get to watch the Tigers, I mean, the Lions game, Tigers, the Lions game. So I want to make sure I stay on point and on, and on purpose here. All right. One of the greatest public servants that ever lived once said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed. It's only the thing that ever has. That's by Margaret Mean. Time is the most precious and valuable commodity that we have, so giving your time is the most selfless gift that anyone can give. The Men on a Mission is a new initiative with the Opportunity Center of mentors, faith leaders, community organizers with the Core 11 members. It's really an extension of the successful Dads in Dialogue we had in June, tools to become a better father. See, single mothers have been doing their job for a long time, and we as men have fallen short of helping those mothers out. And we as men, I got to what these brothers say, we got to step up and do something. We got to be better, and that's what we came to do is be better. The Core 11 men that I reached out personally because they made an impact in my life and why I'm here standing forward today. That's Anthony Hoskins, my brother Chad Tolstad, my brother Ike Smith, Keith Dotson, Larry Aaron, Manuel Lito Mendez, Rosie Barnes, Stefan P. Stack, William Parker, and Willie Hall. Our mission is to provide resources and opportunity to support individuals now and prepare the next generation for success. And we will talk about our first event in a minute. We were very strategic and intentional in our approach. Volunteers like my brothers in progress shape the world. This spiritual alignment is with the Most High. Another great public servant once said, "Volunteers don't get paid, not because they're worthless, but because they're priceless." See, love is an action word. It was written. Love thy neighbor as yourself. And trust me, I'm gonna be done with this soon. When you have men of faith coming together for the better good, it's the most powerful force on the planet. Lastly, in 1992, America assembled the greatest basketball team that the world has ever seen. The likes of Michael Jordan, Magic Johnson, Larry Bird, Charles Barkley, just to name a few. They were appropriately called the Dream Team. Yes, they won gold, and it wasn't even close. We put the world on notice that we're here to stay. Well, Monroe, we have our own version of the Dream Team. In 2025, we're called Men on a Mission, the Core 11. We're not here to win gold for our country, but we are here to bring a gold standard of a community service, and we're here to stay. Any of my brothers want to speak, starting with Keith?
Well, good evening to everyone. Kind of new at this, kind of raw at this, but I believe God uses us all in his own special way. And I just want to represent the Core 11, the men on the mission as far as being one that's been out there in the streets, been out there hailed as a bad guy, but look at God and look what he, look what he can do. Like some of the people that we're trying to represent today, I had like 25 years I've been home out of being incarcerated. You know, Chad asked me one day, thank you again, Chad, for this opportunity. He had asked me one day, could I have a vision me standing here or sitting here at the table with the police on the other side of me? I said, no, not at this capacity. But again, I say, look at what God can do. You're taking nobody and make them into somebody, and I just want to represent my community, my brothers that stand here with me to, to be a representation to the neighborhood and to the community that God is working in. God can change you. You know, again, I've been out 25 years and, you know, I just want to be an example and just hope by me standing here before you all, you can see the example of what God is doing here in Monroe. See, I believe the story says that Jesus came out of a small town, you know, and made a great impact into the world, you know, and that's what we're trying to do. I believe that's our mission, to make an impact, you know, to let people know that we can change and good things come out of small places. That's pretty much all I have to say, and I just appreciate y'all for your time and opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Ike Smith, 925 May Drive, lifetime member here in Monroe. I was, you know, honored to be considered and brought in with these men to serve a purpose, something that's been dear to my heart is about providing second chance opportunities and job opportunities to individuals, citizens here. I've been fortunate to be able to witness some of this, you know, around the world. Spent the last probably four years over in Africa building schools and planting churches. But the Lord had placed on my heart, I need to do something here at home. So he slowed me down, told me you need a new hip and gonna operate on your back a little bit, but when I got the call to come and be able to serve and be a part of something that I knew that would be taken seriously and also not just spoke about, but action behind that. I was, I was just blessed and humbled to have that opportunity, so I look forward to getting to work here. And our first event, I was on the phone today with about almost hour and a half talking with some union leaders about coming here and making a presentation. So we'll rehearse on the 28th of this month, and we'll start next month to put these plans of action in the focus for Monroe, Monroe County and all those who are looking for opportunities, second chance opportunities, but also to prepare them for success. And a lot of people, even in this room, have helped me get to the point where I'm at in life, and I'm eternally grateful for that. So I look forward to seeing all of you and interacting and participating and trying to make this a better city, a better county, a better country. Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Greetings. Larry Aaron, born and raised, Monroe, Michigan, lifelong resident. I echo pretty much the sentiments that have already been spoken. Just was a great opportunity when it was presented to me because that is truly in my heart, to help build up, to help give a hand up, and to change some lives for the better in our community. And when we put forth a conservative effort to make others' lives better, that helps the whole city. That helps the whole community when we help build pillars of the community, you know, because we have plenty minutes to societies, but as a collective, we wanted to just help those be pillars of our community. And so, yeah, when this Core 11 came about, it's just a great opportunity to be part of, again, just helping our community. And I just want to try to quote this, which is truly in my heart. Jesus asked his disciples, he said, well, the disciples responded to Jesus' question, and they said, "When did we see you hungry and we didn't feed you? When did we see you thirsty and we gave you no water to drink? When did we see you naked and we did not help clothe you?" Jesus answered and responded to them. He said, "Inasmuch as you have done it to the least of them, you have done it unto me." And so that's what this Core 11 is about. It's about reaching down and lifting someone else up, and that's what we want to do for this community. And so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Director?
So honorable mayor, city council members, Clerk Lavoy, we didn't want to just be about talk. And so, one of the first things we wanted to do was set into motion is start on the path, and you've heard some of the members here talk about today, was what can we do to help the community? And one of the things we first came up with, and Ike's been a driver for this, I'll give him credit on this, is the Opportunity Job and Resource Fair, which we have coming up on November 5th at the Opportunity Center. We have a multitude of employers coming out, as well as educators coming out as well. I know Dr. Kojo is in the audience here tonight as well, but the Monroe Public Schools will be a part of. And we wanted to be a group that says, when somebody comes in to get a job and they say, well, I don't have a license, how can we get them to the resources? Or I don't have the education to get there. We want to have them available for those resources. And I'll have Aaron kind of close this out here with what this job fair, job opportunity is all about here coming up on November 5th.
Thank you. As we close, the job fair, again, is to eliminate the excuses. There's too many kids in our community, even adults, that make excuses of why they don't have a job or why they can't get the resources that they need to help themselves. So we decided that's the first thing we're going to do, is to eliminate the excuses. We're going to create jobs, we're going to bring them to the jobs. Well, they're going to have to bring themselves, but we're going to make it so hard for them to say, there was no opportunity for me. That's why it's called the Opportunity Job and Resource Fair. Here's your opportunity to change your life, not just for now, and not just for the people now, but for the next generation to come. We're going to have skilled trades. I want to thank Mike Hader for his, 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 his union brothers. I want to thank all those that participate, and I cannot forget Kelly and the library. They're going to have resumes on the, on the job site to, to help them resumes, change their resumes, or get their resumes right if it's not correct. We, like I said, we want to eliminate all, all excuses. We have, there's just so many I can't think of right now because I didn't, I didn't write that down, but our partnerships with Michigan Works is the most important. We want to make sure that all those jobs are available, and the flyers, you'll be seeing coming out and sharing it, I'm sure. Did you share it with them? You'll be sending it out, okay. He will be sending out the flyers, you will be seeing it after here, and I just ask people to get involved. It's a public duty to get involved, to help everybody, like, like Larry said, give a hand up. So I just want to thank you again for listening to us and, and being who you are and making this happen. So thank you again. Thank you, brothers. I love you, man.
Thank you all.
Thank you, mayor.
Aaron?
So I have an opportunity to see Aaron at the fire station family day, and he had with him already disseminating cards about the Opportunity Job and Resource Fair and the date, and it has those partners listed on here as well as this conversation I know he's had with Councilman Hader in our labor, how to bring that forward. So I look forward to, I know the council does as well. We look forward to being able to, I'll say, be with you to see that, how we bring our youth and, and adults that have the opportunity that are being, is being presented to make this work. So thank you for, all of you, for all you're doing and thinking. I'm looking to see. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 5539, the Opportunity Center at ALCC 2025 Third Quarterly Report.
Manager Robinson?
Yes, your honor, this was presented to you as a communication. However, I do see the CEO, Stephanie Kaperzak, here, so if you have any questions, I'm certain she'd be available to answer any questions, or if she wished to make any statement about the third quarter report, she's welcome. But it was originally presented as a communication for your review.
So it's not an action item, but it is a communication for council to have. I, I'm going to say this because those that are here, but maybe not been here earlier, we had a work session, and the work session, and Stephanie Kaperzak presented all the activities and partnerships that we have with the MCOP, but also the Opportunity Center at the ALCC. We also had a presentation by our partnership with the YMCA. It was about all of our recreation and youth and even senior activities was presented. So unless there's any questions from council? Thanks for being here, Stephanie. Appreciate it, as always. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 5541, acceptance of the Ralph C. Wilson Grant ALCC Campus Redevelopment Phase Two.
Thank you. Manager Robinson?
Yes, your honor, this was a wonderful opportunity for a grant that we were just notified that we received, and I'd like to invite Economic Development Director Mark Cochran to give the details.
Mark?
Good evening again, Honorable City Council Mayor, Clerk Treasurer Lavoy. So we've talked about this a lot, but back in 2021, when we first did the space analysis at the Al, at the ALCC in Navar Library, we looked at what the facility needed in order to deliver all the quality services and programming that the facility could deliver to the neighborhood and the community. Of course, at the time, we worked with Kohler Architects to design an expansion of a building that would result in the relocation of the library into an expansion connected on the north side of the building. And with that, the intent was to renovate the existing library space for a new permanent home for Joe's Boxing Club at the ALCC. Fast forward, we know due to COVID and other reasons, construction costs increased, and we had to go back to the drawing board, relook at the overall design and plan for the building, and broke it down into phases. So currently, of course, right now, under construction and moving well along is Phase One, which is the expansion on the south side of the building. But we made a commitment and we made a promise that we wouldn't forget about the rest of the project that was intended, and started looking at that as Phase Two, as construction got underway at the existing facility. And so, fast forward to just recently, within the past six months, thanks to Val Orr and her leadership at the Community Foundation of Monroe County, she's developed great relationships with she's developed great relationships with regional foundations and funders, including the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation. And Monroe is in, within the service territory for the Ralph Wilson Foundation. And they had a program where they were seeking to invest into community hubs. And so, we invited the staff at Ralph C. Wilson down. We sat with Val, as well as Stephanie Kasperzak, wearing multiple hats in that conversation. But we talked about the full vision for the facility. We walked through what the current expansion included, but also what it didn't include that we still want to get across the finish line and plan and program for. Um, and I will say, once we shared the full vision, not only for that campus, but for the entire neighborhood and how it ties in with the Orchard East Master Plan, they said, "We have this grant program called the Community Hub Program," where they were seeking to invest in their territory into community hubs that bring people together, that provide services. And our project certainly met that. So they invited us to apply. And so, we broke down the components of the future Phase Two. Certainly, once the learning bank moves into the new facility, that's going to leave that site vacant. Um, and the city has the intent, once we take possession of that, to remove that building, resulting in the vacant space where they currently exist, down to where Hopkins Tax Service is. And so, what we asked Ralph Wilson is, "Could you help us with funding to help come up with a comprehensive vision for that space that would include a multi-use facility, that would include space for Joe's Boxing Club, but also community, cultural and neighborhood events, and also cultural and arts programming?" And so, uh, the second piece to that was working with Community Reimagine, which the city council and, and the city is very familiar with, giving our partnership and support with them on their housing project to look at the entrepreneurship component. And so, one of the components in the Orchard East Master Plan talked about revitalizing the commercial neighborhood district, recognizing there's a lack of restaurants in the neighborhood, but also looked at, how can that site both provide for opportunities for entrepreneurship and meet the gaps that were identified? And so, Community Reimagine would like to partner with us to host a food truck site where we would use the grant to purchase food trucks that would support people in the neighborhood or in the city who would like to grow a food business. The city, of course, invested $350,000 about five years ago in the commercial kitchen in the ALCC building. And looking at utilization of that community kitchen in this space, how can we help support entrepreneurs seeking to not only establish their business, but provide services to the neighborhood? So, long story short, the application that was submitted included the design in, uh, moving forward with the multipurpose facility that would house Joe's Boxing Club and other programs, as well as the design and the implementation of the food truck site, working with Community Reimagined as a launchpad for food entrepreneurship in the neighborhood. So, uh, we submitted the application and we received the grant. So, uh, what's on your agenda tonight is the grant agreement to formally accept $250,000 from the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation to move this project forward. And of course, I know there's some happy members in the audience from Joe's Boxing Club who are here this evening, as well as Stephanie and Aaron, of course, from Community Reimagined. So, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran regarding item 5541? So I, I, I think of this project, and I'm going to just make a comment. I think of this project and, and we, the years as we plan forward, that, you know, we always have phases, it seems to be, because funding is difficult at times. But this is, really ties to some of the conversation we've heard here already this evening. And it's about, it's not just about one activity that somebody's going to have as we move forward with this opportunity to figure out how we're going to build and where, and, and what is going to serve us, as you said. But it's the mentorship. It's mentoring that comes from that and all these activities that I think benefits the community. And it's not just the youth, because you're going to have support from those adults, which are going to, the men on a mission are going to be putting in place and make the opportunities through their, as they said. So I think this just ties again to the, the growth that we've had and the growth that we continue to see and have a vision for in the council's goals and objectives that we've set. So with that, we're looking for a motion to an item 5541. Councilwoman Stillgrave.
I move that the city council accept the Community Hub Development Grant in the amount of $250,000 from the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation and authorize the Assistant City Manager, Director of Economic and Community Development, execute the agreements on behalf of the city and the Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, to amend the budget accordingly.
Motion by Councilwoman Stillgrave, supported by Councilwoman Vining on item 5541, the acceptance of the Ralph C. Wilson Grant ALCC Campus Redevelopment Phase Two. Clerk, please call the roll.
Germaine.
Yes.
Stringham.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Hader.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. We'll go to the next item. It's Todd and Derek. It's great to see you here this evening. Thanks for joining us as well. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 5544, Exploratory Excavation Authorization for Armored Edge Drive Storm Sewer Outlet.
Manager Robinson.
Yes, Your Honor. For the last several years, when we've had some significant rain events, the most recent being September 24th of this year, where we received three inches of rainfall in a very short period of time, we've had issues on Armored Edge Drive between Crampton and Payson Avenue, where flooding is, it's just, it's too much water and the storm sewer is not sufficiently getting rid of the water to where standing flooding on the roadway as is, is occurring. We have done things with our own, with cameras, et cetera, trying to figure out. We've tried to flush the system to see if there's something blocking it and all those kinds of things in-house. But now we've reached a point where this is bad enough that, that the engineering department believes that we should actually bring in Sal and Bean and come in and do an exploratory excavation of the area to see what's truly going on and why that water's not draining and make any improvements that is happening. So we are actually requesting that $25,000 to be authorized, Sal and Bean excavating for the exploratory excavation and possible repair work along the storm sewer outlet from Armored Edge Drive.
Any questions for administration from Mr. Robinson on this item? If not, it is up for action item. Councilwoman Stillgrave. I'm sorry. I'm looking this way and I said that. Sorry. I was going to say Germaine, but go ahead.
Move to, move that a total of up to 200, up to $25,000 be authorized for Sal and Bean trucking and excavating, Inc., for exploratory excavation and possible repair work along the storm sewer outlet from Armored Edge Drive, and that the Finance Director be authorized to make any necessary budget transfers, including from local street fund reserves as deemed appropriate.
Motion by Councilwoman Stringham, supported by Councilwoman Germaine on item 5544, Exploratory Excavation Authorization for Armored Edge Drive Storm Sewer Outlet. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Germaine.
Yes.
Stringham.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Hader.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is 5543, Recommendation to Upgrade Two MDOT Intersections to Mast Arm Traffic Signals.
Manager Robinson.
Yes, Your Honor, on this, I'd like to invite City Engineer Lewis to come forward to explain what we're trying to do and why the timing of this is, is important for us to be able to do the upgrade of those, using mast arm instead of the typical wire light apparatuses at those intersections. Patrick.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. You may remember, most of you were here, when we did this the last time, MDOT has gone through a process of upgrading these intersections, both with the cabinetry, the controllers and the, and the computer that runs the intersection, and also replacing the diagonal span wire with a, what they call a box span, which is your, what you're seeing in a lot more modern intersections, where the two heads are on the far side of each intersection. Um, and that makes it easier and safer for them to work on just one approach at a time, as opposed to the diagonal span, where they're pretty much in all four legs of the intersection, sitting there in the middle. So that's what, every time they do an intersection, that's what they look for. Um, we inquired way back when they were doing this at Elmen Monroe Street about what the cost increment would be to go to the more decorative mast arms. And it's not just more decorative, they're also beefier. We don't have as many wind knockdowns. You, if you hit a signal pole for these, you're going to know it. So there's very few knockdowns with these mast arm assemblies. And so, that worked out very well for us at Elmen Monroe Street. So then they did the, the next wave a few years ago. They were looking at four intersections, two of them we already did this treatment to. And the city funded our share of the cost, which was the upgrade. So the difference between the wire mounted and the mast arm mounted is what MDOT would ask the local agency to pay for. We paid the entire cost to do US 24 and M50, or Telegraph in front. And then we paid half of the upgrade costs for Telegraph in Seventh, because the other half of the intersection is in Monroe Charter Township. So they paid half, we paid half. And at the time, MDOT was looking to do all four intersections as an upgrade, but due to their budget costs, everything was creeping up. They had to delay two of the other intersections. And so now they, they approached us. In fact, we caught wind of it when we read an article in the newspaper about that they were looking at upgrading the intersection of Monroe Street and Noble, and also US 24 Telegraph and Lorraine Street. So, um, I again asked them, would the city be eligible to participate in these costs like we were before? And they said, "Absolutely, but we need to have a, what they call a soft commitment ahead of time, because they're going into design work." And it's, it's different to design a mast arm assembly versus a span wire because of the depth of the poles, the foundations and things like that. So before they embark on the design, they would like to know if the city is going to make that commitment again. Um, and then you will get about a year from now, somewhere between six and 12 months, depending on how quickly they are. You'll get a formal contract. So tonight would not actually be a formal hard and fast commitment of funds, although in good faith, if we say yes tonight, we really should say yes a year from now when they bring the official funding contract. So, um, they did have some actual, I won't say actual costs, but better dialed-in estimates. Um, and those, the exact number was just under $300,000. And so, um, for the sake of rounding it up to make sure we were covered, I listed that cost as being approximately $300,000. And that would bring those intersections to the same standard as the rest of the corridor. So as you can tell on US 24, we're, we're very quickly getting to where all of the corridor will consist of these mast arms. And that is in keeping with the Telegraph Road corridor plan. Um, and so, we paid for the upgrade at Holiday and Telegraph when Lazy Boy was being redeveloped. And so now, there will only be one intersection in the city left without mast arms. And that would be US 24 and Fredericks on that corridor. So, uh, we're slowly getting there and we, we think it's a better standard all the way around. There is some degree of safety improvement by having mast arms, again, knockdowns, a little better visibility when you can see them on the poles. So we think for all those reasons, it's a good idea that we would ask that council support this initiative. And we've already got a placeholder for it in the 2627 CIP draft that we're working on. So, leave it there.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Lewis? And I'll start with Kelly and then come back. Councilwoman Vining.
Yes, Mr. Lewis, please refresh my memory, because it seems like when, when we considered the four mast arms, I don't remember the cost being nearly as high. I know you talked about we split some of them. I, I don't want to misquote, but I think, do we spend like $80,000 or something?
Your memory is really good, Councilwoman. That was the, that was actually the request, was when we initially brought this in front of council, I think it was already three years ago when they first started the design, it was $320,000 for four intersections. So that would be $80,000 per intersection. So that's, you're getting close to double what the costs were. Now, what transpired between then and now is we had a variety of supply and demand issues that affected those poles. Contractor costs started to go up, so the actual construction. And now you're talking about some potential tariffs on top of there, too. So I, that's, that's a big part of it. But this is, these numbers aren't too far off from what we actually paid for the other two intersections. So we, we think it's plateaued, but between the time we first looked at this in 2022 and when we actually approved the funding contract in 2024, those costs spiked considerably. So.
And just for clarity, Your Honor, this is for two locations. Could you tell me the locations again?
Certainly. Um, it would be US 24 and Lorraine Street.
Okay.
And M125 and Noble.
Okay, yeah. So I just, that number was jumping out as really high, so.
That is correct. It is, we, it's definitely higher than it was last time you saw it.
And in the packet, did you break down like all of the costs for us?
Uh, yes. And again, keep in mind, these, this is just an estimate and this actually isn't the formal commitment. So I could come back to you with a lower number. I could come back to you with a higher number. We hope it's not much higher, but these, these estimated costs are based on the most recent project they had. So.
I like the look of them, especially on Telegraph, but they do seem a bit costly.
The good thing is that there's, they have a significantly longer lifespan, too. So that, that, that helps a lot.
Councilman Felder, do you have a question?
I have the same question as the Councilwoman.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Lewis? If not, a motion for this item. Councilwoman Germaine.
I'll move that City Council authorize the Director of Engineering and Public Services to commit up to $300,000 in funding on the city's behalf to MDOT for the purpose of upgrading the two proposed locations to mast arm traffic signals as a part of their upcoming project.
Support. Motion by Councilwoman Germaine, supported by Councilman Hader on item 5543, Recommendation to Upgrade Two MDOT Intersections to Mast Arm Traffic Signals. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Germaine.
Yes.
Stringham.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Hader.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is 5546, which was moved from the consent agenda. It is for the installation of new sidewalks and Mason Run Drain regard, uh, at the former Lazy Boy site.
Now, Mr. Robinson, you provided us a, um, a new fact sheet with some additional information, which I know the clerk will have, and see this posted. Some additional information has come in that, um, for us to consider as well regarding this item, correct?
That is correct. There is some information about some, some, uh, some additional things we have to do with the Drain Commissioner's Office. And this was provided to me today from Director Lewis, and he's here to be able to briefly describe what the addition is.
Certainly. And, and again, my apologies that you received this today. We were, uh, this was one of those things that kind of came up fairly quickly. We wanted to get, Sal and Bean Trucking and Excavating was already on site, as everyone knows in this community, working on the Telegraph Road Drain Crossing. And, uh, we, we've had these improvements in mind for a while, the, as far as regrading, reshaping the drain. Because basically, when, when the Lazy Boy building was torn down, the drain needed to be daylighted, but we didn't do the fine grading that was required by our permit from Eagle. Um, having an underground contractor on site, we wanted to take advantage of them being there. And in fact, you saw there's, uh, we feel it's a pretty good price to do that, do that drain work. Um, so we, we hurried up and permitted this through the Drain Commissioner's Office, both from a soil erosion standpoint and from a drain right-of-way standpoint. The plans eventually call for a sidewalk and, on the north side of the drain that would go between Telegraph and Huber. So that'd be kind of south of the Dairy Queen. We were holding off on doing that sidewalk until the parcel behind the Dairy Queen develops, because we don't want the sidewalk to get damaged. However, typically, in a drain easement, you're not allowed to put structures or anything permanent, because they don't want to have you come through, have to, and when they clean the drain out, damage a bunch of properties. So, um, we found out through their permitting just on Friday that they needed to have an agreement executed with the city, a maintenance agreement whereby we said that, by them allowing us to eventually construct the sidewalk through there, that we're responsible for replacing that if they ever have to damage it, tear it up, or whatever, for drain cleanout activities. And it's standard language for, for any other entity. It's not just us. Even though we're not building the sidewalk now, they wanted that as a condition of the permit. And so obviously, we'd like to get started on this project this week. So I'd also like to get my permit from the Drain Commissioner's Office before we do that. So, uh, we, we did have to add that to the agenda. So there is a revised motion on here. So I gave you a paragraph worth of narrative explaining that. And then there was one sentence that I, we'll need to have added to the motion. And that sentence is, "That the mayor and/or clerk treasurer be authorized to execute any necessary agreements on behalf of the city." I do have that agreement available. It pretty much states, as I represented in the fact sheet, that's with a lot of whereas's and the usual stuff. But if you'd like to see it, I, I have copies for all of you if you, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any questions for Mr. Lewis on this? As you read through the fact sheet, most of it is the same, but we had the component of, with the Drain Commissioner and the activities to make sure we cover kind of all the bases here. So if there's no question, a motion would be in order. Oh, Councilman Hader.
I move that City Council award a change order for the installation of sidewalks on Telegraph Road to GV Cement Contracting Company, Inc., for the amount of up to $125,000, including a 15% contingency. And that the City Council award a change order for the regard, uh, regrading of Mason Run Drain to Sal and Bean Trucking and Excavating, Inc., for an amount up to $125,000, including a 15% contingency. And allowances for foundation removal and soil erosion measures that the Director of Engineering and Public Services be authorized to sign the change orders on behalf of the city. And that- And that the mayor and/or clerk treasurer be authorized to execute any necessary agreements on behalf of the city. And that the Assistant City Manager, Finance Director be authorized to make any necessary transfers.
Motion by Councilman Hader, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave on item 5546. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Jermaine?
Yes.
Stringham?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
I have no further items.
It's council comments.
It's still October.
Still October.
Still October.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
First of all, I want to thank the men on the mission because thank you for providing a segue for our youth in Monroe to go to leadership and develop their talents. I will be at that job, not me personally, but Lake Erie Transit will be there as well. Secondly, thank you for Telegraph being open. That's all. Thank you.
Councilwoman Stringham?
Yeah, great to see Telegraph open. It's nice to see traffic flowing again and people seem like, I seen a couple of comments online that they thought it wasn't so bad after all. So I'm sure it's difference of opinion. I just want to bring up a, an event this week that's going to be at the Knights of Columbus. The Exchange Club is having a chili cook-off. So if you're looking for something fun to do, please consider joining. You can go, if you're on Facebook, go to the Exchange Club of Monroe's Facebook page and they do have the event there. Tickets are $25 pre or $30 at the door and there'll be some fun stuff for the children. The children are cheaper, so all the details are in that, that site though. But just, there's just continues to be lots of things, activities to get involved with in the Monroe area.
Councilman Felder?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was happy to see the excavation project on Armitage moving forward. I know that every time it rains, my phone rings, especially on that particular block. That's less than a block away from my house. There is water over the road every time that happens. You know, it's unfortunate that the infrastructure is not performing in the way that we intend for it to perform. And I think that it's worth looking at the, at the problem further. As we do that, I know that the administration is going to be as careful as they can be to try and not impact the residents as much as possible and to minimize that to the extent that it's, that it's feasible. So I'm looking forward to that project and hopefully we can get the resolution on, on the water for that part of town. So, thank you. That's all I have for this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Peter?
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of things. First, I would like to thank Men on a Mission for being here and presenting. Look forward to working with you guys and doing anything we can to help you. Secondly, we had a mobile food pantry this past Saturday down in Bedford at the Bedford High School. And I want to thank everybody that came out and helped. We ended up with 34 volunteers there, is the most we've ever had. And it made things very easy, so we look forward to continuing those things and look forward to people coming on in the next one. And lastly, I want to congratulate the ALCC campus on the $250,000 grant from the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation. But more importantly, I want to congratulate my buddy, Todd Riggs. There would be no Jove's ALCC Boxing Club without him. For you, some of you probably don't know, me and him worked together for years and got to spend every day with him and get to talk. And he's not just a boxing coach, he's a mentor. He is so much more to those kids. And I've been there, I've listened to the conversation, not just those kids, those kids' parents or families. And I want to congratulate you, Todd. It's a, it's a pleasure and it's an honor to know that you're going to get that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Stillgrave?
Well, I get to talk about the good stuff, the really good stuff. It's the candy being given out this week. Downtown Monroe, they're doing trunk retreat from 12 to 1:30 on October 25th. There's a lot of trunk retreats out there, pretty popular this year. And Saturday night is Nomadic Nights Downtown Monroe. It's another cool event put on by Joel Williamson. And you guys doing great things. I think we have, we got a lot of great people in this city that are really taking the bull by the horn and just going for things. So appreciate y'all. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Vining?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, of course, I'm excited for Men on a Mission to see where, how far you guys are going to take this thing. And again, the library, thank you, Aaron, for inviting us to be a part. Resumes are one of our specialties at the library. So personally, every resume I've written, my track record is 100%. They always get the job. So that's a fact. So that's one of my specialties. So also, the library is working on this, digitizing the history of the Orchard East neighborhood. And we've reached out, so we're gonna also use that day as an opportunity to maybe get somebody to tell us some stories. We always keep our recorders handy. So it's gonna serve a dual purpose that day. So really excited. I'm always excited when the residents come join us in the council meeting. I think Keith left, but I'm just so proud of him and so glad that you all included him, all the gentlemen. But he says, you know, God can take a nobody and make them somebody. But it's always been in the makings that Keith was going to be a somebody. It's been spoken and prophesied over him since he was a little boy. And I'm a witness, so to see it coming into fruition and now he's able to join you all and reach back and help. And with him having been in the streets and dealing with the chief on the other side of the street, he can reach a lot of people who maybe feel hopeless. And also accessing resources is another one of my specialties. So the fact how, I love how you guys are recognizing that there are many barriers to some people being able to get gainful employment. And so that, the fact that you're going to be attempting to address things like driver's license, ID, birth certificates, all these things that people can't even get to the job part without getting those things first is a, just A1. I give you guys an A plus. I am so moved to have you all here this evening and all of our participants who were here earlier with all the programs and activities that went over, went on over the summer. So this is a super big deal. I'm just super excited about today, hearing all of this great information. And I look forward to hearing more from what you guys are doing. And thank you again.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I have a couple of items that were on the consent agenda that I just want to review because consent agenda sometimes gets reviewed. Sometimes people may not read the entire agenda. But I first want to congratulate our elected clerk treasurer, Michelle Lavoy, for her being, her appointment as her first full term on the Michigan Municipal League Insurance and Liability Pool Board. Somebody may wonder what that is. My wife and I served, she's going, oh, what's that? But it's critically important because it really talks about how do we best position ourselves? How do we learn about liability? And how do we take cases and learn from them? But Michelle, I'm so glad that you took an unexpired term that came available and now your appointment is just, is, is great to serve on the pool board. So congratulations, and maybe you'll have more to say about that. Yeah, she gave a round of applause, done already. The second item, it was on the consent agenda and, and we had a very detailed information in fact sheet, it was on the workers' compensation insurance coverage. And we've been consistent with over the decades here in the city of how we've managed that internally. And as we review those, and I want to thank Dr. Everly from the Human Resources, as well as the staff that worked on this. And our partnership with the Michigan Municipal League over the past decade plus has been significant to know that they are a resource for not just their advocacy through state and federal legislation, but the opportunity for the, the convention and then the Capitol Conference and the training opportunity to elected officials and non-elected officials. And they're just so innovative that. But this is, the, on this agenda item, it was moving forward and having a partnership and relationship with the Michigan Municipal League regarding our workers' compensation and the fund. And I think it's, it's a good move because, you know, upfront, there's always, you have to invest upfront to prevent that you're having to pay less later. And I think the way we had it and it worked for us, I'm not saying that at all, but things' timing will, will benefit from this relationship and partnership because we may have an item that becomes the litigation or an item with workers' comp. And it, and we're getting at the end and it comes all at us at once. I think that's the underlying item on this, I think is great, besides the partnership with the Michigan Municipal League. So I just want to mention that because not just the citizens and those who are here, but our employees understand why this is an important move that benefits all of us. And there's a lot of other information in the fact sheet, can be read if you wish to do so. Now I gotta find my notes. I want to mention because it ties to the conversations on Telegraph Road, the items about putting non-motorized, the sidewalks, the trails. We have many that are coming up and been funded by other grants that are coming in the upcoming year. But one of those we've talked about is how do we, how do we travel safely, whether we're walking, biking, crossing the road? And there's been an installation on West Elm and Borgess with the crosswalk that was painted by our, our local artists, but now the flashing crosswalk markers that you can push the button and feel safer to cross because the lights will be lit and for the, for the vehicles that are going down the road. This is just one of several that will be coming through the city this fall and hopefully additional next year. But I do want to give a shout out to Councilwoman Stringham because before she was on council, this was something as a resident and advocate for safe walking and crossing, joined on the board and commission about pedestrian and bike mobility. And as I pointed to her position here, but this has started with a conversation from Councilwoman Stringham, so I want to thank you. And it's nice, I guess it's fitting that's the first one that we are able to put up. So there'll be others. Men on Mission, I know we had a chance to talk at the, at the ALCC and a couple of events. I just, I'm so appreciative. I think about how it takes a group of, it can be an individual, but then the individual becomes those that get support and the impact that it's going to have within our community as a whole, in our community for opportunities for people regarding jobs, but also play, be a member within our community and knowing that they have a place and knowing that they can also make an impact on others that come after them. So I just want to say, I'm so appreciative and thank that you're, you've met. I'm curious how you're going to keep it to 11 because I think there'll be others that'll be knocking on your door that'll want to be standing there as you're looking, somebody's looking back at you right now. So with that said, the Ralph Wilson funding, you know, the one thing that was in this wing and tongue, there's no match for this funding either. So we have the funding to do this and spoke well to the proposal that was put together by our staff. And I want to again, want to thank our staff, and I've said this in recent meetings, about the opportunity to submit for grants, but the detail, and I know Caitlin McBriery, and I know that there's many within this, the Community Foundation, Val or her group, of bringing that, bringing people together builds the partnerships, communications, relationship. And we get a grant for this amount that know it's going to serve what we knew was a need and was always on our forefront of a need and how funding impacts when you have to make choices. So this is a great choice to have to make today to approve that. And they've had council support and all the staff. And so, and Todd and Derek, again, glad you're here. I think we're all smiling. So and, and notice, it's more than one item, there's many items within it, as you heard how it was presented, but they're all intertwined and the opportunities present itself when you, we need to can touch with youth in our community and those that have a need. So I want to say thanks again to that. I'll stop. Clerk Treasurer Lavoy?
I have no comments this evening.
City Manager Robinson?
I don't have any comments either.
Now it's time for citizens' comments. If you have a president wish to make a comment this evening, just come forward to the podium, state your name, jurisdiction of residence, mindful of the three minutes, please. And Todd, I see you're moving, oh, okay, Kojo's going to move up here first. See, this is what's great. Everybody wants to speak at city council. I see that.
Hello, my name is Todd Riggs. I live at 161 Lavender Street. That's when I come here to thank you guys, the mayor and the city council for recognizing the importance of the boxing program in Monroe.
Absolutely.
I'm glad you guys see our vision of reaching kids, not even teach them to be champions in the ring, but champions in life. Teach them not just boxing skills, but life skills. A lot of these kids don't have fathers, so I become a father to them, and Derek does. Derek will be someday the one that will take over for me one day, whenever the Lord decides to take me, to step, have me step aside. But I just wanted to thank you guys so much. This has been a dream of mine for years and I thank you guys for recognizing the importance of it.
Thank you, Todd. Thanks for being here. Derek?
I definitely want to, you know, thank you guys, thank everybody. You know, coming up, I've had a vision of all this stuff coming to fruition and what Aaron and them are doing with Men on a Mission and the center coming together as, you know, more opportunities. I want to thank, you know, Stephanie also. It's just, all the things that I wanted to do is like, I don't have to recreate the wheel. Everything is happening and the wheel is happening and I can see all the people I can reach out to. I always got Todd, you know, he's got my back whenever I got questions and, you know, to meet all you guys. I just see it coming together because there's a lot of kids at the gym. We got a lot of kids at the gym. We got like over 30 kids, you know, and it's amazing. And then a kid came up to me the other day and, you know, I just tell a lot of people who I meet about the gym. And I told this one, you know, single mom and, about the gym. And this kid came up to me the other day, he's been coming for like two, three weeks. He was like, thank you, thank you so much for telling my mom about this place. I love this, you know? And it's, it's awesome, you know? And we got a lot of resources for kids that's coming down and they're hungry after school and we can feed them and, you know, just teach them about respect and responsibility and seeing all these groups and everything coming together, it's, it's a dream come true. I appreciate everybody.
Thank you both for being here.
I want to say one other thing too. If you guys had anything to do with Bike Path, that's great. The new Bike Path, I love it. Me and my wife, I love the new Bike Path.
There's a champion sitting behind you that is a strong advocate for our Bike Path.
Oh, my word.
The loop trail that's going in, that was a county-led project, but it went through the SEMCOG for the funding. And it's a partnership not only with the county, the road commission, Monroe Charter Township for Insurance, Town Charter Township in the city. And, yeah, it's, 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 it's going to be finished soon here before the end of this season.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
Thanks. Kojo?
Yes, good evening. Kojo Quarte, 328 East 8th Street, Monroe, Michigan, right here in the city. And I am the president of our Monroe County Community College. Let me begin by thanking you all for your support throughout the years. 61 years we've been here in this community. And Elsa Mandela said, "Education is the greatest weapon which we can use to change the world." And we've been making that impact here in Monroe for 61 years. The WalletHub.com just ranked our college as in the top 9% of all community colleges in the nation. Our nursing program is consistently number one in the state. And so is our respiratory therapy program. Our economic impact on this community, beyond this community, actually going into Wayne County and into Lucas, is $363 million a year. That's a lot of change. And on November 4th, there's- And on November 4th, there's a mileage renewal, it's a renewal, not a new tax. There's a lot of noise out there on the internet, some false information on the internet, there is, I wasn't going to say this, but there is no documented evidence of any man going into a girl's restroom on our campus. We have cameras, none in the restrooms. We have cameras in the hallways, and there is no documented evidence of that. And those who claim that, have even admitted that, they have no evidence to that effect. But here in our backyard, we have a first-class community college, and all we're asking for is support. Mike Hader and the unions, they're supporting us with a resolution, you supported us with a resolution, the seniors are supporting us, the other, so MCOP, so many other organizations, we're involved with so many organizations in this community. Men on a Mission, we're involved in that. On the east side of town, in the Archit area, we have the Momentum Program now. We, I think we capped that program, we're supposed to cap it at 50, and we have 75 adult individuals now who will be hopefully educated and given a credential of economic value so that it can make an additional impact on this community. You're about to call time on me, aren't you?
Got about 40 seconds.
All right, so that's information you should have received in your mail at some point in time, and there will be additional information, and you've always supported us, as the city, the college has always been supported by the city, even in times when we lost. We won in the city, and we want to keep that going. We don't want to lose, we want to win, and we want you to continue to support us as a college. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments this evening. All other comments, yes, please go forward. Representative Brock, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, and city council, it's an honor to be here. Very humbling to be in this position that I've been placed in, and I think my college president, Dr. Lessola, used to say, "Wherever you are, be there." So I keep that in my memory and try to be wherever I am, and so, you know, I've been coming here a long time, a lot of times I try to, you know, I don't want to just appear during election seasons, I hope, hopefully, that's, you know, hasn't been the case, I try to get out as much as I can to see things like happen here tonight, it's just amazing to watch. It really is heartwarming and influential, you know, to me. That being said, I got pretty shook up on the way here, making a left turn on Dunbar onto Monroe Street, making a left turn, no traffic coming, and I started making a left turn, and lo and behold, I just about hit a guy on an e-bike with no lights. And so I was a little shook up when I got here, but I know e-bikes have been an issue or been a conversation, but no lights on it, and I came just a couple feet away from hitting him, and it really shook me up pretty good, and, but, you know, it's just a reminder to be cognizant of what's going on, but also for those e-bike riders to make sure they're in compliance with the lighting that they need as well. As you know, budget is over, very, very glad. Couple weeks ago, we finished the budget, and very proud to say that we were able to get that, I'm sure you, the mayor probably relayed all that, and it's probably already been discussed, but, you know, to get that money for the rail grade separation on Elm was fabulous, so we're looking forward to seeing that. I know it's going to be hardship for the Y and neighbors and such, but in the end, it's safer for our community and allows a nice access east and west to the hospital and from the hospital, which is a priority. In budget, I do have to give a lot of kudos, though, I like to give credit where credit is due, and so for Mark and Pat and Dave as well, that had all the, all the information that was requested, they did a fabulous job, and it's not saying other requests didn't do fabulous jobs, I'm sorry, Stephanie, but we had, I had 12 requests in in my budget, and we got one, and that was the rail grade separation, so, but it couldn't have been done without the work that they did, the numbers that they gave, and the valid points that were presented with the federal grants already given and the money that the community gave, or the county gave, as well as the city, all those things tied into getting that last little bit there from the state, so I was very proud to be able to get that, but it really wasn't me working, it was them doing the work, so appreciate that. Well, I'm here, I don't set out to be the best dressed, and I'm definitely not the best speaker, but I want to be the most available and accessible state rep that you've had, so I appreciate the opportunity, and barring any questions, that's really all I wanted to say, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. I want to do a follow-up, because I know that Representative, while the budget, and we all know how the budget went, tedious hours and late nights, and as it sometimes occurs, but I think of those that didn't receive, in fact, the city regarding the grade separation, but I recognize that through the MCOP and their submission didn't make the grade, so to speak, of getting the project. I looked through the list of the projects, and they're all worthy that I looked at the ones that got funded, and I also then looked at some that were submitted that were equally important, and I think that sometimes when we have the opportunities to get funding from, through the, in the budget, there's many that don't make it, knowing that very well they deserve to be there. I think that that's why we continue to work in friendship and partnership, that we know that those that were in our community, the opportunity's going to present itself again, and we have to think about those that did not receive this time, that we support in the future as well, because it meets our vision, and then there, and it's, I look at the MCOP and their submission, and no question it serves our community as a whole, just as the grade separation funding is going to do that and make things better and safer for all. And so as the opportunities come up again, I don't want to, and we should not forget, those that were submitted, and I always say, it's still a good plan, it's still a good proposal, and how do we make it still available when the opportunity presents itself, and you'll have our support, so, thank you.
Appreciate that, yeah, I always tell you, to say it's frustrating is to put it very lightly, when you're negotiating, I mean, you have 110 House members and 38 Senate members, and there's three or four that are actually doing the negotiating and trying to come up with a plan that fits, and obviously, there's a House budget, and there's a Senate budget, and then the governor's budget, and somewhere they all have to mesh, and I was really proud to say it was a very negotiated budget. We in the House didn't get everything we wanted, and the Senate didn't get everything, but it was negotiated, and in the end, I was very proud about yes on the budget across the board, and it helped the schools, definitely some increases there, and kept a lot of the categoricals that were wanted by the community, and that was well-known. You know, I got a lot of feedback, and I do take the feedback, so I appreciate whenever, you know, constituents and even non-constituents in our community reach out to me and give me, you know, reasons why. We're never going to agree on everything, and certainly you won't agree with everything I do or don't do, but respect, respectfully making your wishes known allows me to be able to raise it up higher, and I did get a lot of that, especially on that categorical on the food, and I can't remember the nomenclature, Stephanie remembers it, but, you know, that allows the YMCA to feed and the MCOP in the schools, and that was very, very important to our community, so I was glad that made it on the final budget as well.
Thank you.
Thank you again, sir. Thank you, council.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Comments from any others present this evening? Okay, don't, don't tell me the score, I don't want to know, we'll find out later. Okay, there's no further comments, we have a yet closed executive session, so let's action on the motion for a council.
Councilwoman Stringham.
I move that we enter into closed session for the following purposes: land acquisition, attorney-client privilege, correspondence, and discussion of pending litigation involving Jim's towing FLP Properties LLC.
Motion by Councilwoman Stringham, supported by Councilman Felder, to go into closed executive session for the items stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Stringham.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Hader.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes, and thank you all for being here this evening, and those watching.